This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Welch?
Here. We okay to go ahead? Is it recording? Okay. This stands for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, our fire department, city workers, and hospital workers for their safety in the work they do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We have a resolution, amending a resolution 20-053331 to approve the hiring of a technical consultant prior to June 15th, 2021, to develop a master transportation plan for the city of Arkansas City utilizing grant funds.
Okay, that'll be number two. New business then? Do I have a motion?
Show me.
Second.
Motion in a second to accept the resolution amending 2020-053331 to approve the hiring of a technical consultant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I get an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
Okay.
Motion for approval of the agenda in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those posting sign. We have moved now to awards and proclamations.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have online with us tonight several members of the Ark City Area Complete Count Committee, and also, on my step down, Mike Crandall was part of that along with me and Josh White. And we just wanted to acknowledge what the work and the time that everyone that participated in that committee put in. We started work on the census in May of 2019, and it continued until October of this year, which was quite a bit longer than any of us anticipated when we got started with it. So I really do appreciate all the people from the community that had a role to play in that, and I wanted to take some time to name them off and just recognize their contributions. Before I get started, though, I did want to read a message that was given to us by the Census Bureau, and we have Jason Dean online. He is still a census employee, so if he wants to say some words afterward, he's certainly welcome to. Dear partners, we asked, you delivered, and now we simply say thank you. We have reached another milestone in the U.S. Census as our 2020 decennial count has come to an end, and we want you to know that we could not have made it without you. No words can truly convey what your sacrifices have meant as we together work to achieve a complete and accurate count throughout the country. Partners like you are the true trusted voices in the community, helping to raise awareness and spread the importance of counting everyone once, only once, and in the right place. We know it has not been an easy task, but because of your dedication and commitment to service, we have been able to tackle every challenge that has come our way, including natural disasters, social unrest, and a global pandemic. Your contributions will positively impact your community's healthcare services, schools, senior center, roadways, public transportation, and public library for the next decade. These improvements can make a difference in the lives of so many Americans. Thank you again for being part of this remarkable historic 2020 census. Jason, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, Andrew, thank you for giving me an opportunity here. You know, our CCCs are really the backbone of the community effort to make the census the best that it can be, and you guys did that. As you mentioned, we had numerous challenges that were unforeseen for the most part, and so I see, you know, Josh is with us. Larry, you helped out a great deal. There's a lot of members that I don't see here tonight, but I am going around the state to thank everyone in person and/or virtually, however that's best to be made. I do want to convey real quickly that the census does continue on, and our surveys are extremely important, and there'll be some people in the Ark City community that will be getting surveys, and they might think they're done with the census and throw those out, and that would be bad news for Ark City because a lot of grants, block grants, are informed from that data that we collect. So we encourage you to let your constituents know that you might get a survey, and it's really just as important as the decennial that we just wrapped up. Early next spring, we'll be releasing data like what the population is of Ark City, and so you'll be able to make all kinds of decisions, public sector, private sector, nonprofits, and so forth. Today, you may have seen the census released its estimate for the population on April 1st for the nation. So just that's the first trickle of information we're getting, 333 million for the United States, and we'll be drilling down all the way to little neighborhoods in Ark City and letting you know that next spring. So I think I'll stop there, but thank you so much, Andrew, and everybody with the committee.
Thank you, Jason. Real quick, I just want to acknowledge everyone that was a part of this committee, and I'm going to start with those who just attended one meeting and worked down to a few key people at the end that I do want to highlight. Those who are in attendance, I'll pause, and if they want to say anything, they're certainly welcome to. The participants in this committee effort through this last year and a half included Shawna Allison, Bob Baker, Lindley Bartlett, Dak Cole, Alicia Cole, Randy Frazier, Carly Hoag, Amy Hutto, Trevor Langer, Tammy Lehman Henderson, Jeremy Trulov, Julie Wilson, Thomas Langer, Janice Marv, Jody Pugh, Will Foninstill, Dennis Riddle, Mary Torres, Doc Arnett, Crystal Hunt, Mike Bergenini, Dr. Ron Ballard, I've see on there if he would like to say anything. Hearing nothing. Lloyd Colston, Jerry Krumblis, Mendy Foninstill, Paisley Howerton, Carla Gallegos, and then the people I really want to highlight, they attended at least 10 meetings and were pretty integral in helping plan our activities and get out information. Those include Landon West, who started with us as a student life manager at Cali College and ended as the director of the REC Center, Carrie Filetti with Cali First, who is on the call. Carrie, did you want to say anything?
No, just, it was a pleasure to get to work on the project, and hopefully we'll see the results of positive impact when we get those reports. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned, Mike Crandall. Yasmin Wood was at 14 different meetings and was very integral in helping us network with some of the hard-to-count populations and the social service networks that we needed to use to reach them. Larry Gilmore was at 15 meetings, and he was a census employee. Larry, do you want to say anything?
I cannot add anything that Jason hadn't already approached with you.
All right. We benefited greatly from Larry's knowledge. I think this is your third or fourth census that you've worked on?
Yes, this is my third, and I don't think there'll be a fourth. I'll be a little too old to be doing that.
Yeah, this was a big one. Jason O'Toole with Cali College was a big help, and then a couple of people I really want to highlight, because without them, I don't think we could have done nearly half of what we accomplished. Pastor Jack Dixon was just absolutely integral to everything we did. He brought kind of the spiritual sense. He did outreach to the Hispanic churches, got us network of translators, gave a lot of his own time and effort. He kind of helped organize when we did the driving parade, and he was at practically every meeting, so I really commend him for all the work and effort he put into us, because faith leaders don't have to do that kind of work that, you know, we expect out of our government, and he put that in, and he saw the importance. So I really appreciate everything Jack brought. He was kind of our heart and soul of the effort. And then I would be completely remiss if I did not acknowledge the amazing contributions of Anita Judge Jenkins, who chaired the committee, was at virtually every meeting, gave countless thousands of hours of her time and effort, whether it was giving talks and presentations, taking posters to businesses. She was at schools during enrollment, talking to parents, and then she worked for several months in the summer as an actual numerator. So I don't think she's on the call, and I'm sad about that, because Anita deserves a really big hearty round of applause for all the work she did, and I commend her greatly for her leadership and her efforts in that regard, so. And I do want to thank Mike and Josh. Without them, I couldn't have held it all together. It was quite a challenge. And I want to give Nick Hernandez some credit, because from the very beginning, he said we were a major priority, and he dedicated my time to it, and I hope it made a difference. So we'll know when the numbers come out, and we'll see how it goes, but I'm optimistic, and we'll certainly use that data for the next 10 years. You guys have any questions or comments you might want to make? I see Dwayne logged in.
Andrew, that data be coming out in April, or do we not?
Well, there's a lot of ongoing legal action, but they have to deliver counts to the president to determine the apportionment within that timeframe. We'll probably start getting data later in the year, depending on how they roll that out. You know, a lot of it's online now, so it's just kind of as they edit. What Jason mentioned today was there, it's kind of a control. They look at birth records, death records, immigration patterns to come up with those estimates, so that then when they release the census data, they can kind of compare and make sure it's in line with what they were expecting. So it'll be a big rollout over the next year. But by the end of next year, I would hope that we would have some pretty good numbers, at least the total population count.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks for all the volunteers.
Yeah, thank you for your support.
Well, thank you for your all.
I'll have my updates, because I know it's probably tedious after all. One Andrew left off, because Andrew lost, and he put a 10 hours in this, so appreciate you too. Well, thank you. Thank you for your time, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks, all the volunteers. A recognition of visitors?
Yeah, so as you know, we've been working with a joint venture group here to work through the process of designing ways for our treatment plan upgrade, and tonight, two of those gentlemen are here from that group, Jeff Keller with Burns McDonald, has a process we've gone through and where we're at right now.
Thanks, Commissioners, for inviting us here. I'm Jeff Keller. Oh, thank you. I represent the joint venture of Burns McDonald Engineering and CAS Construction. So we're a team that work together. We've worked with many communities across Kansas and across the other states in doing exclusively water and wastewater improvements for our city. What I want to do today is just take a few minutes to explain to you why the project is necessary, what's driving it. I've talked about the work that we've done thus far and sort of what the next steps are in our contract, so you have a good idea of where we're at right now and where we're headed, okay? And again, as I'm going through this, if you have any, I'm going to try to keep you high level. If you have any questions about what I'm talking about, please stop me and ask. I'm happy answering questions, or if you have questions later on, then I'm happy to answer them too. First of all, let's work the formula, let's see. Well, if you get advanced slide, that'll work for me too. I don't know. I think you're getting a slight advance or fake. Well, we don't have slide, I can still talk through it, but, okay. Do it on there. So let me talk about the drivers of the project when we're getting that worked out. Thank you. There's two of them, okay, and I've listed them there in order of priority and how they impact the project. The first one is upcoming changes to your water quality permit. That permit is issued through the state of Kansas, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and they set limits on certain contaminants that can be released into receiving streams, rivers, creeks, reservoirs, things like that, based on the latest science. And around the Midwest, what's been driving changes to this permit, what's been driving the higher water quality standards, is releases of nitrogen and phosphorus into rivers and streams and reservoirs. That can cause local problems. That all trickles down to the Gulf of Mexico and causes major problems there with fish kills, algae blooms, major water impairments. And so on a regular cycle, the state goes through and looks at major water bodies and decides, are they impaired? Is there a need to change what your individual city's permits allow you to discharge? And in the case of the community's down in this part of the state, the discharge to the river here, there is an impairment related to phosphorus. Phosphorus is found in fertilizers, things like that, so really common in this part of the country. And so they are setting a maximum allowable limit on the phosphorus that can be released by the wastewater treatment plants. They're also making more stringent the amount of ammonia that can be released by wastewater treatment plants. Those two things are called nutrients. They say nutrients mean ammonia and nitrogen and phosphorus. And so these new limits are going to drive improvements to your wastewater plant, because it can't meet those type of numbers today. And I'll go through some of those details in just a few minutes. The other driver is the condition of some of the infrastructure. Depending on what part of the plant you look at, it could be 40 years old, it could be over 60 years old, and for a lot of the plant, they weren't designed to be functional that long, especially the mechanical components. The two other things that are very important also is the safety of the facility. You want your city employees to work somewhere that's safe, somewhere that's compliant with current codes, and there are parts of that plant that really pose a safety hazard that need to be addressed. And then finally, we want you to have infrastructure that can be ready for any type of industries, any other kind of growth that might happen in the city, so you want to be prepared for the future while you're addressing these other areas. So those are the big drivers. Within our contract, we've got just a limited number of tasks and deliverables that summarize everything we've done, and the thing that we've done thus far are a condition and a safety evaluation. We went through as a multidisciplined team of art techs and engineers and construction specialists, went through every part of the plant to identify what condition is it in? How much life does it have left? Is it capable of continuing to serve the wastewater plant? Is it code compliant? Is it safe? And then we also looked at it from a regulatory standpoint. We reached out to KDHE, had some really good communication with them about when can we expect these changes to the permit? These permits that you have are at a five-year cycle, so every five years, there's an opportunity that they might change. So got a better understanding of what numbers we have to hit, okay? Now, the deliverables that come out of that are really twofold. One is this development of improvements, and I'll talk about how we got to that in just a few minutes, but that is a list of, here are the best things you can do to meet all those requirements. And the second item is the basis of design report. You have to turn that in to KDHE, so they can review it and say, yes, your plan makes sense. It should meet the water quality requirements, it should meet code requirements, it's safe, and it's a reasonable, safe thing to do. So those are the two big deliverables, and we are, you know, in the midst of developing these concept improvements, working with the city on that part, and the things that they report would be the sort of the final deliverable in the study. I want to go through the findings, and that's on the next few slides. First of all, the existing condition, the safety evaluation, I mean, many of your plant assets are in sort of moderate to poor condition, but it's mainly just due to their age. They haven't been treated wrong, you know, they're not the wrong stuff. They've just been there a long time. But I want to commend Tommy Bowman and the staff out there. They have done an exemplary job of maintaining that plant, and I feel like a broker director, because I say this at a lot of places, I'm always really impressed and amazed that operators can keep things running as long as they do. They really put their hearts into it, and they really understand the sort of limitations of what the city can do for them, and they do the very most they can. So your plan has largely been in compliance, you know, it's been running for a long time real well, but it's just sort of, a lot of those parts are just sort of at the end of their life. In terms of the capacity evaluation, you know, working with the city, looking at population records, projected population, opportunities for new industry, we were looking at, you know, providing some extra capacity, so that when those opportunities come up, you're prepared for it. Something responsible, something very moderate. So we have a report that projects what that growth ought to be, and as much as we can, we want to reuse the infrastructure that's out there when the infrastructure is in good shape, when it can be reused and retested. A great example is the concrete structures. Concrete lasts a long time, so reusing that can make sense. Electrical gear, you almost never use electrical gear, because it goes away pretty fast, becomes out of code compliance. A wastewater plant is not a really hospitable place to wires and breakers, you kind of chews them up. So reusing stuff is a good way to save on capital cost. And then finally, in the regulatory investigation, I discussed the nutrient impairment in your next river, and the upcoming safety requirements, your next permit will be giving you a tighter permit for ammonia, new limit for phosphorus that you have not had to deal with before. That's going to be a new thing on your permit, and the technology that your current plant uses is not designed to meet that kind of a purpose. It works just fine for the permit you've got now, not for the one that you're going to get. So we also talk to them about what's next, what's the next thing that you're going to get hit with? It's at least 20 years out. So the changes we're talking up soon will be the changes you see for a long, long time. No other big changes, because the city, the state schedules when they're going to do these future investigations, and they don't see making another change to your permit for at least two more decades. So keeping that in mind. All right, so based on that, when you look at the treatment plan, there are several This is an aerial of your existing plant. There's four or five places where both the improvements have to happen. And laser works. All right, so communication and control. One of the ways that you can make the best of your money is to make sure that you don't need to add a bunch of staff to the treatment plant. And so being able to control it remotely sometimes, be able to communicate what's going at the plant to the water treatment plant, which is more continuously staffed, is a good way to manage your money, and so improvements to that communication and control system at the wastewater plant is key to that. Meeting your new permit, it really has to do with these bigger basins where I've labeled nutrient removal. These are designed properly for the permit you've got now, but they won't be adequate for the permit that you're going to have. The next few pieces are screening is when they take out some of the coarse debris, some of the big stuff that falls down the pipe, and some of that equipment, it just is not doing the job right. It's making a mess, it's making for a hostile environment to their operators. There's some equipment replacement that needs to happen in here. The disinfection equipment, that gets rid of virus and other pathogens before you release to the river, that equipment is well past its lifetime. It's still operating. Again, it's a credit to Tommy and his guys, but it's not going to last anymore, and so replacement of that equipment's necessary. And then finally, this digestion and solids. The wastewater process, at the end of it, you've got the solids left over that can be used as a soil amendment. It's a beneficial reuse of the material, and that's exactly what they're doing, but again, that equipment has 40-plus years on it. A lot of that equipment needs to be replaced, so they can continue to do what they've been doing successfully. So that's where a lot of these improvements need to occur.
If I understand you correctly, that would be the screening, the disinfection, and digesting solids are immediate?
They, all those things are, yeah. All of these things.
When you say communication control, will that be more of a remote?
Yeah, we're going to make it so that some things can be operated remotely, that some alarms can be addressed remotely. Some of the more dangerous and costly things are the things that happen in the middle of the night, and if you can monitor the plant remotely, it can make it safer, it can make it less costly.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So the decisions that have been made thus far, what the best ways to address these problems, it's been with kind of everybody in the room. We've had a lot of time with Randy, with Rod, with Tommy, with Mike, Jennifer. We've all sat down and approached these solutions with the, really a best value approach, and that means we identified what are the criteria that we want to judge different solutions by, to make sure it's the best fit. And that means the capital cost, that means the long-term operating cost, how complex is it, how reliable is it? Bottom line, it says peak flow management. Some of y'all may know really well that when it rains in Arkansas City, you get a fair amount of that rain in your sewer pipes, and so when you get a wet weather event, the amount of water that shows up at your wastewater plant is many, many times what they normally see. So when you get equipment, you need to make sure it can handle that peak flow. And so what we do is we wait each one of these criteria and say, well, what, how important is this, and how important is that? And you have this weighted criteria, and you score your choices. We could put in this piece of equipment, or equipment B, or equipment C. Well, let's score and see which one turns out to be the best choice based on that criteria. And so that's how we went through to address a lot of these deficiencies. I want you to know that overall, the scoring was weighted heavily for cost, which is, in my opinion, how it should be, right? None of the options were unable to meet the criteria. Some were just better than others. So what I have here, just as an example, is this kind of scoring criteria we used. We have three categories. We have a safety category, we have a failure, a compensative failure category, which is a little bit of a catch-all. Everything that isn't safety or money. Economic is all the money. You can see safety, even though it says 0%, that's because we vetted everything twice. We took a long list of choices. Anything that had any safety concerns, we kicked it out. And so in a second round of evaluation, everything in here met our safety requirements. So we were left with two criteria. This 40% and the economic, which was 60%. And you can see that the capital cost, how much it costs to buy and install it, was weighted the same as your operating cost. How much will it cost you to operate this thing for the rest of the life of it? And so all that adds up to 100%, and you just score your different options and see which one comes out ahead. The thing to know is, we weigh things this way, because this is how equipment sort of lives and dies in its own cycle. Typically, the cost to own and operate equipment, there's more cost involved in that than the cost to buy it and install it, because you have to maintain it, you pay for electricity, you pay for replacement parts, you pay for labor to do that kind of repair. So this is a very, very common sort of thing, where 68% to 80% of the total cost of the equipment comes in just operating it, maintaining it, keeping it in service over 20, 30 years. And a smaller fraction of the cost is actually in buying it and installing. So we don't want to forget about the cost of owning it. We talk about lifeblood cost. What's also important to know is that when it comes down to making hard choices about what can we afford and what we can't afford, you start looking and saying, I understand it's going to cost me more to operate some piece of equipment, but it's less expensive to buy, and that's what I can do today. So we want to be sensitive to that also. Okay, so using those criteria that I showed on the previous slide, those seven, or those seven criteria, in this example, we have three different pieces, alternative pieces of equipment, alternative one, alternative five, alternative six. We scored them all through those different criteria, and we actually get a numeric score, and the highest score provides the best result for the owner. And so it's not as if everybody sits in a room and kind of sort of feels like what the best answer is. It's a very methodical, really thoughtful way of doing it, with many, many people in the room providing their opinions, their experience, and things like that, one's for cheeks. And it's also something that can be revisited over time. There we go, okay. So we've gone through that process and determined what we think the best improvements are for the plant, and I just want to lay out sort of moving forward what our schedule is going to be, and then I've got a few follow-up items on what we're doing next. But just so you know, the big picture here is that, assuming that we are able to find all the right solutions, and that it fits, and it's in affordability, within the affordability range of the city, this first phase of the work that we're going to do is going to be wrapped up in late February of 21, with a price per construction established and documents by KDHE. And after that, we'd start construction in March of 2021, and then there's a bit of a typo on that slide. Construction is projected to occur about 18 months, so it'd be done in October of 2022. So just note that, it's not a five-month construction. And then after construction, there's started a number of months. We never get done with the project. We never get done with the project and walk away. Any other community we work with, we keep on coming back, we keep on helping them. We want you guys to be able to operate this facility right. So finally, just some next steps. We're now looking at the overall project cost of the city. We're prioritizing hospitals, the most important things, but maybe are less important so we can make sure that we've got a product that's going to be workable. As soon as we get that established, we'll put together that basis of design memorandum, KDHE, and get that submitted. And then following up with a Phase Two Design Build Contract and SRF loan. That's where we are. I don't know if there's a lot more I have to talk about, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have right now. If you have any questions later on, you reach out to me directly or through Randy. Either way, it's fine with me. I'm happy to take any questions.
I've got a question. It's kind of a silly question, but notice that we're talking. How do we know that, if we will, this plant down the road, and they change process 10 years from now, and then we're going to have to do something different? Major deal? I mean, is that possible or?
If no change is processed.
Well, I mean, if the state comes in.
That's a great question. Because that should be a big concern, right? So understanding how the state comes to these new permits is really important. It's very slow. It's very methodical. There's a lot of fighting back and forth in Topeka about which changes are going to be acceptable and which ones aren't. And so it takes decades for these kind of changes to occur. The changes that you're going to see on your next permit, this phosphorus and this ammonia, they've been in the works for 20-plus years before they've shown up. And so one of the first things we ask the folks at KDHE when we have these discussions is, okay, we understand what's going to be in the upcoming permit. When is the next change going to happen? It's vitally important. And their answer was at least 20 years out for the next change.
Are there any questions from the group?
Karen, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Duane.
On the decision-making process, I think I missed what alternative one, five, and six are. I didn't find them in the packet. Is, can you go through that right quick or would it be better to get paper to explain it?
Oh, no, it's fine. I was using that as an example, but that's a real true example from this project. There were three different equipment manufacturers, the equipment they provide, that all provide the same level of treatments. They all treat the water the same way, but they were different packages by different manufacturers, had some different features and different pricing. And so any of them would have been acceptable to implement in this project for the treatment of the water, but they all had different pros and cons. And the reason, the reason they were not numbered sequentially is because we already had vetted a bigger list and cut some people out.
Hey, I thought it might have been a different type of process, but it's all the same. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? That was an excellent presentation.
Thank you. Again, if anybody has any questions moving forward, please reach out and contact me, okay?
Thank you.
Daniel, do you have anything you want to talk about or?
Nothing directly. I would concur with Jeff's presentation. This has been a process that city staff, they can very, focused on very greatly. And at particular times, I know in particular, Jennifer right now is getting overloaded on certain things. And we do appreciate the staff and their involvement that they've done through this. My focus is, as a city representative, I'm another engineering firm. So we have, we have a working relationship back and forth, but my process is kind of sitting beside the city staff. This process has been very good, that opinions are provided. We're looking at what, we know there are several needs we've also discussed once. I'll just say it that way. And we'll continue to look at those things financially to see what could work best for them, for the city, so.
I have a question. Is there different cities that's going to have to do this or look at this down the road? Is there a revolving fund that they can go to? I mean, on their financing or how's that?
Currently, what we're looking at, and that's the one Jennifer's assisting me and others, the city has also brought in John Haas and Ransah Financial, your financial advisors, that they're currently looking at information. But what we are looking to do is to go to KDHE's state revolver fund. And that would be a 20-year loan through them, current rate of 1.36. So we will, we will be looking at a final application on the completion of the Phase One, and we'll move forward from there. And that will be a process that will be brought through. There'll be public hearings, all those types of things. I know you guys have some familiarity with that, so.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Stay stick around, but we've got a school drive.
Take your time, guys. Thanks for coming out.
Okay, moving on.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
I have a motion and a verbal second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posting the sign. Okay, oh, business.
What's a public hearing regarding the proposed 2020?
That sounds like many.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Go second.
Posting sign. Jennifer?
I'm here to answer any questions that are in.
Is there any public comment? I don't hear any public comment or anyone wanting to make a comment. Okay, I'm going to close the comments. Close the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. And move to consider the first reading.
Jennifer, can you go over and explain exactly what you need to do to be able to close out this year?
As far as the budget?
Yes.
Okay. So we look at each fund individually, make sure we're within our budget limits. These six funds, I've identified that we are either going to exceed the budget limit or we're getting. So this is what we're doing tonight, just assuming most of them are revenue sources for the expenses. And a couple of them, it's just that sales tax came in stronger and we turn that money over to the sources that those are used for, so.
So we're not going to exceed the set amount that we had for last year. We're just moving inside that.
You mean overall or fund?
Overall, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Right, we're not. No, I had, I had some people ask me that and I said, no, we have a set amount. We're not going over that. So this is just operating within. And we did have sales tax that came in stronger than expected.
Right, I mean, so we are going over the original budget authority amount on some of them. So like the CID sales tax, we're going above what I originally budgeted because it came in stronger and I pay that out to them. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it is a great thing. None of these are, none of these are a bad thing. Uh huh, yes.
Anything, any other questions?
Do I make a motion? We, the last one, hold up here. That we consider the first reading in order to subending the civic funds in the budget for the City of Arcana City for the year beginning new January 1st, 2020.
I second it. Recall, please.
Mr. Eastman?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes.
Ken, did you have a question or?
No. Okay.
No, I was trying to.
She was just giving me.
It's a hard time to go with plastic. And we have three copies of the certificate that all need signed by.
All three of them? We'll start over here with this individual. Your business.
I'll come in tomorrow and sign.
Thank you, Duane.
Consider a resolution adopting by reference the city's 2021 comprehensive fee schedule and repealing resolution number 2020-07-3341.
It's just rising in the sanitation cost or something, sir?
Yes, it is. And what page is that on? I'm trying to get to it.
I don't have it up here.
Okay.
It's page 44, 45. It's comprehensive fee schedule. And then moving to 48.
Pretty much the second to the last page, I do know that. I just don't know what page.
Okay, so yes, page 32. So it's on the, it's on the commercial of the three yard dumpsters. Tony, I talked to Tony about it. So there is a $36 per ton dumping fee. They propose a $45 fee. That, that covers the cost of the, of the tipping fee when they go empty it. But also the $10 will cover the cost of them, you know, delivering it, picking it up, maintenance and those types of things on it. The other change is the, before, you could have it for 14 days. And with a limited amount of dumpsters, having them out that long creates a problem. So bring it down to three days and they can renew it. You know, if they need it longer than that, they can go ahead and renew it. And so that's really what the changes are about.
Motion?
I make a motion on the resolution adopting by reference the city's 2020-2021 comprehensive fee schedule and repealing resolution number 2020-07-3341.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Consider a resolution, amending resolution number 2020-05-3331 to approve the hiring of a technical consultant prior to June 15th, 2021 to develop a master transportation plan for the city utilizing grant funds.
Duane, this is, Duane, this was handed out this evening, so that's why you probably don't have it in front of you.
I don't, okay.
It's a similar, we talked about it at the works and you might explain, go ahead.
Yes, so you might recall back in May when we were doing all vertical meetings, we approved the resolution thing and we would have a process and hire a technical consultant by tonight. A little wrinkle in that is that we filed out a request for proposals and did not get any bids. And Blue Cross Blue Shield provided a $25,000 grant for this service. Only just heard back about 3:00 PM today that we needed to amend our resolution to give ourselves more time to figure out what to do. So I quickly whipped this together. Basically, this is the exact same language as the resolution for May. The only difference is that I know as we passed that one and we did not have responsive bids and therefore we will amend the resolution to give ourselves another six months, which would be June 15th of 2021. I don't anticipate it's going to take six more months to figure this out. We'd like to get it solved in the next month or so so that we can work this in with the comprehensive plan. But we may need to negotiate directly with a firm or put out another call for bids. We're still working on that. So this is just kind of CYA for, you know, legal purposes regarding the grant. They asked for documentation, so it's really all there is to it. You have any questions?
Any questions?
Shield is okay with this?
Yes. Yeah, I talked about it the other day. This came from the Public Health Law Center, which is their legal partner for these sorts of things. I mean, it's honestly kind of overkill in terms of being accurate for what we're doing. But, you know, we did say by tonight, so we need to fix that on the record.
Well, that's being said, I make a motion to, considering a resolution demanding, resolution number 2020-05-3331 to approve the hiring of a technical consultant prior to June 15th, 2021, to develop a master transportation plan for the City of Arcana City utilizing grant funds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, since he's standing there and he had something he wanted to bring up, so I'll let him go ahead and address you.
The mayor had asked for a report on the grants we've received in light of the most recent grant, which was for the North 15th Street Bridge. I'm going to call my partner, Krym, up here to assist me. But, you know, we put a lot of work in on these. I know I've personally spent, I don't know, it feels like I've been working on grants nonstop for six months. It hasn't been that bad, but he works on even more crazy ones that I have to deal with. So it is nice to maybe take a step back and acknowledge what we're able to do. So keeping in the theme of what Jennifer brought up, this is good news. We're able to bring in, I didn't call it much money as we pulled the one in a town grants and other forms of assistance. There is a rundown in your packet toward the end there. It's one of the color cars. The color coding, if it's green, it has to do with parks and facilities. Yellow is streets. Blue would be police and Chief Ward can testify to any of the grants he's received. And red is fire EMS. I just wanted to kind of update you where we're at real quick. The transportation alternative grant, that's still on cat 4, still in design on high bike trails. There will be $803,000 to help with basically paying for smaller construction of that. We're just waiting on Evergy to get down with their project so we can. Do you think it may be? It's going to let us in August.
Right. My city sheriff's coming from college and Evergy using their money for the city to match.
Sure. The Sea Clips, the one has obviously been just completed. That was $300,000 and then we've been awarded $300,000 for US 166 going west. So he does an amazing job at getting those knocked out and lined up. That's a big help to us as we're finding with Summit Street, when we don't have that kind of money to match, it's a lot more difficult for us to figure out how to do these projects. The VJ Wilkins Challenge Grant came in finally at $205,802. That is quite a bit less than the original $500,000 we tried to get, but you know, kind of the story behind that. But all that money has been received. We just got the last check, so we're finishing design on the Phase One upgrades and we're hoping to get moving on those very soon. The local bridge improvement, of course, we just got, so thank you for the support on that. That is the city's oldest bridge.
Built in 1915, 105 years old.
And should be, I don't know if they're doing an article, Karen, or what the?
They said they were.
So there should be some kind of release or something coming out on that. Chief Ward has actually already hired the officer, the Pops Grant. We're still sorting out some issues with the federal government to get reimbursed. That's been a real process, but I did want to note that accomplishment for the police department. The CRF funds, basically everything's been purchased. I don't know if we put you guys in on everything we applied for in the second round of the CARES Act. But we were able to buy 60, well, $70,000 of ambulance cot upgrades for all of our ambulances. Of that, $61,695 is going to be paid for by the CARES Act. We were awarded $27,440 for technology. We only ended up spending $12,200. But that's paid for all these mics and the camera and also a lot of equipment that'll go in at Wilson Park. We're still waiting on quite a bit of that on back order. So we'll have to get some documentation of that effect. Still covered. And the ADB were actually purchased directly by the county. So while that. They just purchased and gave it to them. But those are going to go in all the police department vehicles for first response. The citizen contact area, I believe, is nearing completion and we ended up spending $1,496 on that. And unfortunately, we were given $1,300 to get equipment for disinfecting paramedic clothing and uniforms. And they were only able to find one UV wand on Amazon. All stock is gone. So while those numbers that were awarded do feed into that 2.1 million figure, as you guys understand, we didn't actually all that money because lack of available supply in particular funding program. And that's, that's most of it. We just postponed it on the master transportation plan. So that money will still be available. We actually already have that. We've received that check as well as the $15,000 for Papa Walking Trail. And that's going to go over a bit. I think it went over a little bit on what we ordered on the poles. And then there's some other signage that we're ordering to do a story walk on Papa Walking Trail, but we'll get the remainder reimbursed by Rice County once we finalize that project. So all told, we were awarded over $2.1 million in grants basically in the last 12 months.
That's water.
Perpels $3.327 million worth of projects. So, you know, it's been a lot of hard work, but I think. Yes. At the bottom there are the pending grants. The cross share program, we did not get awarded this last time, but we just had a call with KDOT today. They made some suggestions and we're anticipating a call for applications in March. By then we should know the status of CDVG funding for North Summit Street. That'll be announced in January. Hopefully we'll get good news on both fronts and we can finally get that project moving forward. And then the recreational trails program, they came down a few weeks ago. We took them around and showed them. In January, Mike and I will have to log in and make a virtual presentation to their commission sometime after that. And on, in February is when we should hear on the transportation alternatives funding. If we're lucky and we get both of those funding amounts in full, it actually exceeds the cost of the central trail. So we would have additional money to either do more of something or we'll have to look at that. It's, my guess is that won't happen. RTP is very competitive. We'll be lucky if we get half of what we asked for. I'm hoping. So that would be an additional $2 million if we were to get all those grants funded in full.
Wow.
Thank you, guys.
Gosh, you guys.
We got a question for Mike on our bridge.
Not yet.
Oh, yeah.
We're.
We hope for Christmas presents.
I don't think so. Talked to KDM last week and they're processing our category B emergency protective measures. We should get 60 some thousand back on that. So here again, this was April, May of last year. We still have about 93,000 in claims that we haven't received yet. Because the whole state was, was involved. Damages and that. But I'm watching for it.
I want to thank you guys for challenging us because I think we come out with better projects when we're forced to look for other sources. So it's.
Well, I think you guys are a good team, you know, working together and what you, what you guys do. That's how we're being successful in these great stuff, you know, because of you guys.
I think if it's, it's kind of behind the scenes and I thought it needed to be surfaced. You guys do a lot of work.
Thank you. Thank you. I owe a lot, I think we owe a lot of credit to CIP committees as well because.
The CIP is very essential committee.
That's coming up again here in a few months. So we'll be putting those forms out here shortly. So let's finally, you know, I put a couple of pieces of paper on your desk with updates on COVID, school districts. Delay in returning students and Tom gave updated numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you.
Rain, do you have a question? Maybe Mike can help on that one too. The alley work behind Hometown and Sparks and it's now a river back there. And it's almost impassable.
Yeah, we're at the mercy of AT&amp;T because they have a fiber optics line laid right on the top and. Been trying to get AT&amp;T to move it. The cost is supposedly cost prohibitive. But we're still trying to get them to do it. It would be one of their biggest projects.
Right. Well, the local guys say there's no fiber optics back there.
Now, they, they, Chris Mine and Smith and Oak surveyed it and there is fiber optics there.
Well, I mean.
Looking at moving it.
What's their solution? Yeah.
Well, dig it up, move it, move it over to First Street was the last word I heard.
It's been a very long time. And I did talk to Chris and he said the one guy at AT&amp;T is not calling him back. So he's going to try and get another guy.
Last week and he got ahold of that guy's boss. So Don Jones is their representative in Wichita and he got ahold of his boss. And expressed a concern because if it collapses.
But it's getting worse by the day. And every time there's a moisture, any type of moisture.
Settling gray and yellow clay, ferrous connections.
Yeah. So, and, and those business owners are struggling to get in and out of their back doors.
Driving cars, trying to park back there is an issue.
Okay, thank you.
And once we do do the construction, we're going to have to close the alley from.
And they understand.
I'd be more than happy to get the alley closed and get it fixed.
Sort of line. I forget how deep they said it was, Randy.
It's down there.
It'd probably help block the alley to get it fixed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Coast is down to the end here. To remind you, City Hall and the other city offices will be closed on the 24th and 25th. For Christmas, the recycling center, Estrada Field is going to be closed December 25th and 26th. City Hall will be closed on January 1st. And just a reminder, we will not have our work session that day. And the next city commission meeting will be at 5:30 on January 5th. And that, remember, that'll be your reorganization meeting. So we'll. Commissioner Rogers will take over as mayor and.
We'll move on down the line. I said, anything further?
Make a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
All those in favor say aye. Wayne, we're adjourning, Duane.
So now?
Yeah, we're adjourning.
All right. All right. Andrew, you still there?
There's no reason for you not to.